Order. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, do you?
I get it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
When I saw your quote, I'm like, huh?
Okay, we'll start with our COVID update, Amber.
Yep, the numbers are eighty-three this week for the local count. That's up one from last week, so we continue to seem trending one per week. And then for Suffolk County, the seven-day positive, seven-day average positivity rate is two-point-six percent. So that's dropped from three percent. So we're continuing to head in the right direction. And then also just to re-announce again that we are on November ninth having a Pfizer vaccination pod, thanks to Stony Brook Southampton. And the links are in both English and Spanish on the town website. The we've have, we're getting approximately six-hundred doses. So far, three-hundred spots, approximately three-hundred spots have been.
The booster.
Booster. Oh, booster, yeah. So yes, it's the booster, so it's the third dose or third shot. And about half of the spots have been signed up already. I'm looking at it right now and we still, all of the morning spots are gone. So from twelve-ten to five-fifty, we have availability. So hopefully we'll get them all filled locally. It's on the town website right now. Stony Brook has not put it out on their platforms yet. So please sign up.
And again, the CDC changes so that it's a Pfizer vaccine, but you can mix and match.
Yeah, yes. So yeah, they, the cross-vaccination is allowed. So if you had Pfizer or Moderna dose, if it was on or before April twenty-eighth, our last pod, second dose, was on April twenty-eighth. So everyone is eligible from those two pods to get the third booster shot. And if you got Johnson and Johnson, the date is April, August twenty-fifth, I believe. I should go back and just double-check that. It is August twenty-sixth, on or before August twenty-sixth. And bring your vaccination cards.
Yeah, that's important.
The originals.
Yeah, okay. And the school will be open, but that wing will be closed. So we could do it, the incentive will also be closed that day. Chief, anything else you want to add to?
No, but if I can just lightly jump to another topic, I just wanted the community to know that we're monitoring this nor'easter. We have high winds expected from later this afternoon through tomorrow. PSCG is on the island and is staffing, staffing us. So far, no power outages. If anybody gets a power outage, make sure that you notify PSCG. If it's in the road or alive wire, you can also call the police department. But we remind all our residents to please notify PSCG of any outages. They've done a great job of staffing us pre-storm as they've done in the past. So I just want to let our community know that they're on the island, they're going to staff us. Depending on the winds tonight, they'll probably staff us through the night. So but so far, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next on the agenda is continuing the transfer of developer, development rights legislation. Bob, you passed this out to everybody. I don't know if you had any comments. You want to just walk us through the key points so we can hopefully schedule this for a hearing at the next town board meeting?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of verbiage here, but really only two main key points. The, 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 the short version of it is that this is allows us to transfer septic credits so that we can do higher density developments in certain areas for affordable housing purposes. The, the, the two main points here are this, one, that any land purchases that we make going forward, we need to make sure that in the resolution, we indicate that we're preserving the development rights specifically for the purposes of transfer. The second point is that the town board is going to have to determine what agency they want to have oversee this, this bank that we're going to have to create for these development rights. Most places, they have the planning board do it. And that's probably the most, you know, the, the most common about it. But that ultimately is up to the board.
Okay.
And basically, the bank, bank is nothing more than basically keeping track of, of what we have.
Right. Okay, so going forward, we, any purchases, we have to, you know, specifically define that we want to transfer development rights in place. Unless one of the deals with, you know, one of the people we're buying property from specifically don't want it, that would have to be discussed.
So, and then once, um, once the town board is ready to approve this, we'll send it to the health department for their comments. They only wanted final, the final version, so I didn't want to send them, you know, any number of drafts on this as we went through it. So we're, so on that point, we're waiting for the town board approval before we send it to them.
So, so you're ready for approval? We don't, we're not going to set a hearing, we're going to just approve the draft and then.
Approve the draft and we'll send it to the, we can, we actually could go ahead and set the hearing. It was just, we may have to adjourn it if we haven't heard back from the health department.
Okay.
Could I just ask?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, this is a seven-page document and, and obviously, and A, it talks about the town's goals and it lists five of them and they're easy to discern. And then on the B, it talks about these goals, the attempt, the, the purpose of the chapter. And then C, it talks about the sanitary flow credits shall not occur in the town of Shelter Island or transfer of them. But then it talks about definitions, and the first thing on the bottom of page one, it talks about eligible projects. And it has A, B, and C. Well, B and C are self-explanatory, projects in affordable housing zone district, including any floating zone. And C, town of Shelter Island municipal buildings. The one I have a little problem with is, is A, projects located in a receiving district that are permitted uses in the zoning district in which the subject property is located. Then it goes on the top of the next page to explain exactly what a receiving district is. This is any area of the town or particular lot that is desirable to have developed more intensely, intensively than areas outside the district. Such areas may be designated by the town board and shall not be limited to particular zoning. That should be, I guess, districts. That was just the typo there. Yes, could you, could you just explain for us or give an example or examples of, of A? I'm just, just would like to be, have a little bit better understanding of the eligibility for receiving district.
We had to torture this a little to get the New York State language to work properly for us. Most towns have a, a, a lot, you know, seven or eight different types of zones. And it's very easy for them to say that we can, we're going to transfer something from X zone to Y zone. Shelter Island really only has, other than a couple of minor sub-things, two zones. We have business or residential. And so we don't have the ability to say we're going to transfer it from a agricultural zone to a residential zone, or from a residential zone to a, a lot of people have industrial zone because we don't have those zoning classifications. So basically, we had to work this in a way that we can, that there's a little more flexibility for the town as far as just being able to transfer it within the same zone, you know, from, from A zone to A zone, for example. Yeah, with, and still, you have to change the density requirements.
So Bob, basically what you're saying is we have residential zones, A, double-A, and C, and a business zone. And A, double-A, and C are all for housing, residential, obviously, the residential uses. So this would apply to any of those zones.
Exactly.
Then we don't, like you said, we don't have an industrial zone, we don't have agriculture, we don't have, okay. So this was kind of taking what?
This was basically taken it. Yeah, exactly. This was big, you know, to fit the, the state requirements to Shelter Island.
Mm-hmm, okay. So we're not. Yeah, I think it basically, the short of it is, we're, we're looking at, you know, again, for affordable housing, we're only looking at residential zones where, or business slash residential zones that already permit housing. We're not looking to put it where there is no, you know.
Yeah.
Because we don't have any zones that don't permit housing.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so on the next step, does this, for the liaison, the planning board, does this go to the planning board for their, to see if they want to accept that responsibility, it'll be assigning that responsibility, we asking them, what are we doing? Kind of for them to oversee the transfer rights.
How does that work with the planning board, because they're their own entity, more or less? Can we ask them or do we tell them?
As far as assignments, you can give them, you can assign it because you'll, you do it by code and that there is, as responsible to the code as anyone else. So you can, you know, you can assign that to the planning board. Honestly, as far as a practical matter, I would say that we, it should be something that's discussed with them.
Yeah, right.
As far as it. But again, that's more of a, you know.
And house.
A logistical issue than a legislative one. But, um. Yeah, I would say that that's probably something to be worked out with the planning board.
Okay.
Um, I had the same question that you had, Jim, on one. I'll answer it. I'm jumping to page four, I think it's just related.
I don't have numbers, could you tell me where, what you're?
It's the one on the bottom of top, Al.
Procedure for transfer from bank to receiving district.
Just one right here.
B, the town board, board before publishing notice for a public hearing should comply with all state environmental quality review act, sacred requirements and costs associated with review shall be paid by the applicant. I'm just, for me, I'm just reiterating the importance really to have the comprehensive plan in place. I think it's an important measure to have. Based on the comprehensive plan, we set our zoning districts, and is there a need for sacred? Following the development of the comprehensive plan.
I'm not, I'm not following you.
Albert, there'd be a secret for each project.
No, I realize that, but I'm calling attention to the overall substance of this, Bob.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding here.
Yeah, I'm not understanding either, Al, but what's, what's, what's the actual question?
I guess the crux is, just to reiterate, I think we need the comprehensive plan before we do any kind of zoning allowance.
Okay, again, we're, we're not, we're not doing any zoning right now. We're putting in place the ability to transfer credits in the future. And part of the comprehensive plan is to address affordable housing. And, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Just maybe, Albert, to clarify somewhat, the important, the purpose of this is to let us start accumulating the credits.
Right.
No, I understand. This doesn't actually do anything with regard to zoning change.
Okay. No, that, that was my, my, let me just say.
No, I like it, the, the good parts of it, the next page, five, number F.
Yeah.
Are the last sentence, in projects involving affordable housing, the applicant shall be required to file covenants and restrictions stating that the affordable housing created shall remain affordable in perpetuity. I mean, there's a lot of good.
Yeah. And again, that's one of the things we discussed with the, the only affordable housing project we did on Shelter Island. It was very successful, and the first one sold after twenty-five years. I think we learned from it that we need to find a way to keep them affordable in perpetuity.
Yeah. On the last page, Bob, we're talking retroactivity. It says, to the extent permitted by law, this section shall be deemed applicable to any purchase by the town of Shelter Island within the past blank years, including but not limited to, and nothing shall prevent purchases of the Community Preservation Fund. That any lot was purchased prior to the enactment of this statute should not alone disqualify it from being utilized as a sending district, if not otherwise limited by deed.
That's a big, that's a big point, Jim.
Yeah, so, so it's, that's something that, first of all, I need that kind of explained to me a little bit. And how many years are we going back in terms of the purchase of properties by the CPF?
Well, I'd say, pretty much that's going to be as long as the health department will let us go. You know.
Right, so our goal is to go back.
The Transfer Development Rights Program was initiated in two thousand and six. So I would say anything from two thousand and six forward, as long as we're allowed to do it, that's something we have to research.
And in talking to Fred Thiel, there is something before the governor that will allow for that automatically.
Right.
So as long as it hasn't been restricted within a deed or covenant. Where, he's hoping that, shoot, the governor will sign the legislation that allows it, as sort of a blanket. So it may be moot in ours, but it's good to have it.
Yeah, essentially, just to, really, that's, this is to cover that eventuality. So. But this, this was kind of our, you know, we have had, we have, we in particular, you know, have preserved an awful lot of land over the last, you know, since two thousand and six. And I think it's important that we at least have the ability to get the credits for that.
Right. Okay, Bob, so the next step would be you'll send this to the Board of Health?
Yeah, as long as, if the, if the town board is comfortable with that as it is.
I'm coming.
Just clean up some of the sections, so it's.
Oh, yeah, they've got to be numbered and such, I just.
Right.
I like to keep those free until they're approved.
Okay. All right, great, all right, thanks, Bob. Okay, next on the agenda is the town code revisions. Again, we're not changing any code, we're not adding any code, we're just trying to make sure what we do is right. And we started with definitions. Bob, I know we got a lengthy email about questioning some of the definitions, so you want to respond to that before we go over those?
Yeah, I'd like to take the, you know, we got a letter from, from Peter Rees asking about, you know, some of these things. And I'd like the opportunity to, you know, to discuss those, the, that letter with Peter at some point. Other than.
His comments are in red, I guess, on the, on the thing.
And, yeah, I've, I've been through that this, this morning and I'll, I'll talk to, speak to Peter about those and kind of explain to him what the rationale was for the, a number of the questions he raised. And I'll get back to the board on that.
Okay. And again, if we can get this in place for the next town board meeting.
Yeah, if any member of the board has any questions, if they could send them to me before the next work session.
Okay, and Bob, the other piece to the puzzle on this revision is Article sixteen. Amber was going to just share it quick and you can explain what it is and what we're looking to do, please.
Sure, Amber, you're going to put it up, Amber?
Yes, um, you want me to put up the existing Chapter sixteen or what Bob had sent to us? I'll put, I have.
The revisions, I guess.
Okay, let me, if you have that handy, bring it up, because I had pulled up the existing.
Okay.
Unless I beat you to it.
And basically, Article sixteen is the structure in the town government?
Yeah, essentially, what, what this is, is, and I'll kind of explain it while discussing.
I found it.
Over the last thirty years or so, the way that the government operates on Shelter Island has changed somewhat dramatically. We've added new departments, we've added new committees, we just never put them into code that we were doing it. Basically, this is just a cleaning up of, and an explanation of what we do on a, on a day-to-day basis. And it covers some of the requirements that the state has for us. You know, just to, we have to designate what class of town we are, it's the first one. What positions do we have, what departments we have that we, you know, the classic one is way back when, I think when Chris Lewis was still here, we started having a deputy supervisor, but we never, you know, statutorily created the position. So we have to do that. It's, it's mostly administrative in nature. We're not, again, we're not changing anything here, we're really just setting out in writing how the government's structured so that people can go, you know, and very quick and very easily see, you know, or, you know, what, how the government is put together. You know, we've done, I know, the organizational chart at one point that would probably end up being an end up to this as well, so. But that's the basics of it, you know, what are the terms of office, how do you fill a vacancy? What your roles of the, of the supervisor and the deputy supervisor? All those sort of things, most of them are simply compliance with New York State law. Others are things that, you know, how we've always, you know, done it, most of it's well, taken right out of either the New York State statutes or, or the prior code. So, I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at it or had any questions.
I, I need some time to go through this. All right, so what we'll do, Bob, is just like we did the transfer of development rights and highlighted the questions for you, we'll highlight the questions for Article sixteen for next week. And we'll have that ready to move forward for the next town board meeting also. And in that time, you'll have discussed any questions on the definitions. We can finish definitions in Article sixteen next week.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, and the next one on the list is also town code. This is a revision, though, this is a, the septic revision. This is something the town board adopted a, a couple of weeks ago, but we said we were going to go back to it and address Albert's concern about making it a little more restrictive and a little more proactive. So, I don't know, Albert or Jim, who wants to go through this?
Well, originally, yeah, well, originally, we, we had come up with, you know, with a bunch of five different recommendations, and I think the town board pretty much was in consensus on items one, two, four, and five, where the problem was, was in item three, which sparked a lot of concern. So we went back and we revisited that, spent some time putting some notes together, and then Albert and Joe Finora and I met. And this is basically what we came up with. Item number three, which could be renumbered, by the way, was any septic system upgrade or replacement required by Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and any expansion or renovation of a single-family residence, a multi-family residence, or any other building capable of being used as a residence. That, and it covers A, B, and C. A states has an existing non-conforming septic system as determined by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. And/or, B, increases the SFLA as defined in the town code by twenty-five percent, or more, obviously. And/or, C, increases the number of bedrooms as defined by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services that exceeds the allowable number authorized by a permit previously issued by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. So that, that was where we came up with, and I think the thinking from the three of us were that, you know, the example that I gave about the finished partial basement type of thing didn't factor in here. But this, these A, B, and C do address a lot of the loopholes that currently exist of people being able to skirt around the IA system. And these are things that Suffolk County has been moving towards. So this is not something that we just kind of, you know, pulled out of the thin air. It was something that we looked to the county for some type of guidance. And it seems that the towns around us are adopting similar types of legislation. So, Al, do you have any further comments that you would like to make?
I mean, A, basically, cesspits, individual tanks.
Yes.
Houses before nineteen seventy-three, typically, maybe a little later. They're illegal in Suffolk County, but Suffolk County chooses not to really enact any kind of legislation to deal with them. So this is attempting to deal with those, the, the, those that furnish most of the nitrate contamination.
Right.
To our.
Yeah, those are septic cell that are now forty-eight or years, years and older.
They're not.
They're ninety.
Increases SFLA, that's, that's pretty standard, twenty-five percent. And then the bedrooms, as defined by Suffolk County Department of Health Services. Four, four walls and a door. That exceeds the allowable number authorized by a permit. The home has a previous permit for four bedrooms. And they currently have three, and they want to add a bedroom, they'll be in compliance, they don't have to add an IA system. But if they have four and they want to add a fifth or sixth bedroom, then I do have to upgrade.
Okay, right.
It's basically, to simplify, Jerry, it's, it's, it's a mandate, and I know people don't like mandates, but we have to start to do this. Pretty soon, every, everybody on the island is going to have an IA system mandated. There's going to, there's going to be a compliance period, and it's going to have to be implemented. And that's a, going to be a tough thing to do.
Yeah.
I realize that, it's pretty big. But this just.
And this also covers any other building capable of being used as a residence, which is something that we talked about with accessory buildings. You know, where rooms are added and accessory buildings. And if a bedroom is added there in an accessory building where rooms are added and, or a bathroom is added, you know, that's.
It, it's, it's been a slow process.
Right.
Granted, I mean, it's been, I think, four and a half years since this, the IA systems were implemented with WQI funding.
Yeah.
And we have a hundred in the ground. At this rate, by the end of the decade, we'll have three hundred, which is.
Still a pittance.
Yeah, it's not going to make any impact.
Yeah. Yeah, and Joe, Joe's not on, I just looked to see if he was on the call here, but I don't see his name up here. He was pretty much in full support, I think we, we worked through this very nicely, you know, we looked at every possibility. And we did it all within one hour. Took us about fifty-five minutes of just a little doing, a little homework beforehand, bringing in all the possibilities, now throwing out the things that we didn't think were feasible and putting in these three items here to support the new item number three or four, however you want to reword that. But it was fairly fair.
What do you, what do you think, Terry?
No, I think it's good, I think, you know, you, you had brought up initially, you know, some very good points. And I just felt we needed to really tighten up how you wanted to do it, and I think you did that. I think you defined it very well, and this is a good start. I think, Al, to, to your comment before about mandates, I think that's something we're going to have to seriously talk about in the future. This Thursday, again, we have a meeting in Yap Bank with the Deputy County Executive and the Board of Health. Amber and myself are going with Joe Finora, our grants writer, Kevin McAllister from the Nature Conservancy, James Eklund from the WQI, a few, some other people from the town. And we're going to go talk about, you know, this whole program and, you know, we want to get some, you know, firm commitments from the county moving forward. And we want to, you know, toss some ideas by them too, that if we decide to go mandates, how are you going to work with this financially? I had some discussions with some people recently that they just bought houses on Shelter Island. And they said they kind of wish that the mandates were in place that, at the time of transfer, they should, it would have been done because it would have, you know, would have been part of the sale and they would have done it and got it over with. So I think that's, I was always against the concept of mandating that when a house sells, that you'd have to put an IA system in. But I'm seeing now that the way real estate has changed, and, and the reason I was against it was, you know, again, you know, my big thing is the affordable housing and, you know, trying to keep things, you know, where people can afford to live here. But again, those days are gone, and I mean, every house is over a million dollars. And, you know, if, if we're serious about protection, this is one of the ways we're going to have to look at doing it is, you know. Possible mandating at time of sale, a house over a million dollars has to put a system in. So, and that's something I like to discuss.
Think of the sales the last two years. It becomes part of the negotiation.
The the one thing about this mandate, and the word mandated, it's almost like the word compromise from years ago, the word mandate is kind of a dirty word now. But we're all in this together, water is water, every everybody, everybody's run public office, everybody you stop on the street, every organization. What are you gonna do about the water, what are you gonna do about the water, not only the drinking water, but the waters in the bays and and surrounding waters. They're all concerned, your real estate, your future, your health, is dependent on getting these things done. And there's no time like the present to start taking some serious action, so, you know, again, gotta get over the word mandate. It's it it's something that, it's an it's an insurance policy for the livelihood and the health. Concerns of everybody that resides here on Shelter Island for the next decades to come. Just like the school is doing its part, and we are trying to do a reasonable study here now for the center of town. Homers have to do the same thing, it's just, this is not talking about whether you want to put in solar, or whether you want to put in a reverse osmosis system or anything else, this is about. Protecting the aquifer, and I think it's, it's on everybody's mind.
Yeah, I think you're a hundred percent right, mandates were always like, you know, especially to me, a dirty word, you know, you know, I don't believe in mandates. But to me, it's almost now like it's, just like we have the two percent transfer tax where, you know, if you choose to live on Shelter Island, you have to contribute to. You know, the potential for to preserve open space, I think if you choose to live on Shelter Island, you have to commit to helping to protect the aquifer. And this is one way to do it.
And these are serious things that we, once you enact these, the numbers of applications that are gonna be generated. Will increase significantly. And my major concern from getting is how we handle those increased numbers of applications in terms of actually getting them in the ground. So that's that's something.
I I think one of the key parts to our meeting Thursday is getting a commitment from the county on how they're gonna process these. Because Meg, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think right now the biggest holdup is getting county approval for these systems. We have, you know, X amount of applicants, you know, just waiting, and, you know, the county, I don't think. Set up properly to handle all the applications.
Yeah, you're correct, the only thing holding up installation is county approval, so at the moment, that's the biggest hurdle. There are plenty of installers to do the work, it's just getting the county to sign off on it.
Right, and again, you know, we're we're looking at W Q I funds, we're looking at a county and state help. For further funding, so it's right, right now, it's really not the funding end, it's just what you said, Jim, logjam of. Getting these, you know, we only have a hundred done in four years, and really, that's because of waiting to get the paperwork done, you know, in essence.
You know, the son of it all, though, was when we attended, I sat right next to John Cronin, three and a half, four years ago, in the county and Riverhead, when they went through all this. That was the number one concern expressed by all five east end towns and the people from other other towns in Suffolk. Will you be able to process these quick enough, you know, will it be done in an efficient manner, and the answer was yes, 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 and. And I know COVID hit, I know there was a lot of other issues, but. There is no excuse, if you want as a county to get to meet your goals with I A systems and clean up this order. Gotta beef up that area of the health department to be able to process these in a very, very timely and efficient manner. So there are no delays. Which encourage other people to say, you know what? I'm withdrawing my application, I I won't go, I I've waited, you know, several months, and I'm I'm changing my mind about it. Let's let's process them quickly, let's get them in the ground quickly, let's keep moving in a timely fashion, if in fact, we're gonna really make a serious dent.
And and the last thing I just want to reiterate, when, you know, Joe Finner keeps reminding us. That this isn't a cure all. I mean, this is addressing a very specific problem with the aquifer, but down the road, there'll be other problems, and. We're gonna have to be ready to address those.
And and I think that's for the hope, for the people that are listening here today, you know, Joe, Joe hits that same theme over and over and over again. It is probably the single most important thing we can do immediately, we have a control over. But obviously fertilizers and spraying spraying and and all those other measures that we need to look and how we're messing around with the environment. Need to be addressed as well, but I think this town board and whoever's elected moving forward. We're gonna be, it's it's gonna be the driving force for the next, you know, several years. Is to start getting legislation about spraying and and getting people certified and. And cutting down on fertilizers and stop it putting, you know, dangerous toxins in the ground to kill weeds and insects and things of that nature that. Were just, you know, again, the I A system will only handle the nitrogen issue, but there are many, many other issues. That also threaten the the health of of individuals here on the island and the safety of our drinking water, so.
No, no, I just, I I, you know, I think this is good, that what you came up with, like, because we need to keep. Taking, you know, steps forward in a measured approach, and I I think we're doing that, we're not like laying everything on. Um, you know, the public, like, everyone has to get this done tomorrow, we're doing it step by step, and I think that's.
That's gonna come. Undeniably.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I agree with that, I just, I think going, like, us moving forward step by step in a measured fashion is.
So, Al, I know this is your, you are really, you know, adamant about this, you're comfortable with this.
Yeah, it's a compromise. Jerry, you know, what I originally proposed, I would have preferred, but this is a step toward. You know, doing something to to really cut back on.
But you're showing that the two of us actually got along there for fifty-five minutes, we got these things done, right, Al? You know, we weren't arguing back and forth, we actually put our nose to the ground and got it done.
Okay, next on the agenda, this is a a new one, and this is gonna be a little involved. The governor has changed the law concerning the open meetings law, and I'm just gonna read part of it, then Bob's gonna kind of walk us through it. Effective November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, upon request and to the extent practicable. Public entities must make available at least twenty-four hours prior to an open meeting. Copings, copies of the following types of documents, if they are scheduled to be the subject of discussion by the public body. First, proposed or amended resolutions, laws, rules, regulations or policies. Second, records that are available to the public pursuant to the freedom of information law. Basically, what 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 it's saying is, right now, the agenda should be out twenty-four hours in advance. And now they're saying any documents that are gonna be on the agenda need to be available to the public, now this isn't just town board. Work sessions or town board meetings, this is any committee meeting, so we're gonna have to have an avenue. To get this done, so Bob, you wanna kind of walk us through this?
The easiest way of dealing with this is simply that the documents need to, will need to be posted to the website. Because once they're posted to the website, they're considered to be available. So that, you know, basically. With basically, the town clerk already does this with regard to the agendas, when they post the agenda. On the website, they they generally post all of the resolutions, the. Whatever is up for business for town board meetings, we're gonna have to start posting these. As well for work sessions and well for committees, meetings. What I'd recommend is that each committee post their documents on their own page for their meeting. And that the town board basically create a site or a page within the webpage for the town board. Uh, meeting documents.
We've already done that, when this came out, if I could get the screen share back. Um, yeah, when we saw this on, was it Thursday or Friday? Um, we started to do that, so if you go to. If you go to the town website. Yep, and it's just giving a second to come up, and we added a button called meetings. We had one, but that we've got it more prominently placed now, so if you go to meetings and agendas. And scroll down, you'll see that today's work session, if you, if you click on town board work session, October twenty-sixth, that's where you'll get the agenda. The watch now is if you want to watch the live stream, and then upcoming hearings, laws and legislations. That had been placed elsewhere under news and information on the website before, but now we've got it for each.
Part of the agenda. How do we go to the items like we talked about today about the transfer of development? If you. The town code revisions, the septic revisions, where would you find those?
Well, you'll see the PDF that has the agenda, so you can see what's gonna be discussed today, so, you know, it's. You can't just click from here, because this is a PDF, and I guess we could look at setting it up, you know, differently, we. This is a work in progress, but we did discuss it.
Well, actually, you see it listed, you you actually just go back to the town code, click on town code, and you can look up, you know.
Yeah, so here, the first one, town board work session, that's where you get the agenda. The watch now is if you want to watch the live stream, and then if you click on upcoming hearings and laws, so when we looked at the agenda. The first one was transfer development rights, so upcoming upcoming pending laws and legislations. There you go, you've got the transfer development rights, so it's right there. So that's how we'll do it for town board work sessions.
So do we have to have a meeting with all the committees and walk them through the process? Just like the W one M A C, though, last year, we spent Better Park six or seven months in the fall, winter and spring on on dock revisions. So we put, we would post the dock law for the for the entire fall, winter and spring. This year, fall, winter and spring, we're gonna go to moorings, so we're gonna put the mooring law up, because a lot of times we'll be not gonna, gonna discuss applications. But after we finish the applications, we will spend some time at the meeting, actually talking about revisions in the existing law, so we will post that on the. That's for us, it's one of the two.
And people are gonna may need to be a little patient with this initially, because I, there's, this is gonna be a logistical nightmare. Because a lot of times with. Code revisions in particularly, we'll go through twenty twenty-five drafts. And so that might not always be the absolute most recent one that's posted, and it's gonna be very difficult to kind of keep up with those. So you you need to make sure they check with, check the dates on those when they look at them. Like I said, we're still.
Jim was saying, like, the W M A C, Bob, you know, yeah, the proposed mooring law will be on there. But will all the applications for moorings be on there too?
I was gonna say, there, if you, I I don't go to the W M A C, but for Planning Board and Z B A, if you go to the committee page. Whatever's being discussed, you can click into, it's available, oh, only voting board.
Yeah, it's it's not on. Yeah, but Bob, according to this law, there's everything, you know, will will all the applicants have to be on the available to the public?
I don't believe app, I don't believe the full application is something that would be required to be publicly available. It doesn't fall within those categories that were provided.
This is kind of vague, records that are available to the public pursuant to.
That's the the kind of catchall, and I'm. I I think probably some of the, here's the problem, some of the application would probably be foilable, other parts of it would not be. Right, so need to be redacted. Again, that's why I was saying, I think, you know, this is gonna be logistically a a very difficult thing to to fully. Comply with, and we're gonna need to try to get it worked out right.
Well, I think we learn as we go, and we continue to make improvements as we go, I think the most important thing is for the town board meetings. You know, it's a good start, so that people have access to the documents beforehand and and during the discussion, so that that's important. And I think with committees, we'll we'll try, well, if we, as liaisons, we're all here. If we're having difficulty, we'll bring those suggestions back to the town board on how we can improve, you know, across the board. If it works for one committee, it might work for more than one committee, so we'll share that knowledge with other people, right?
Well, I mean, it's, we don't, it's effective November eighteenth, we all, you know, all the committees have to do this, I think, so. But the committee clerks will already, you know, they'll be the ones who will actually handle the logistics of making the information available. So it makes it easier, because we just have, you know, two, three clerks who now need to. Be able to make this happen, you know, to implement this.
What about the C A C where you don't have a clerk assigned?
There is a clerk.
It's gonna be a matter of of determining, you know, what needs to be posted and what actually can't be, for example. W Q I water quality improvement, you know, there are situations where we're asking for people's tax returns as part of it. You know, we're certainly not posting that. You know, so we we didn't, we're gonna really need to make sure that the stuff we do post doesn't inadvertently. Disclose someone's personal information.
What about speaking about that, Bob, W Q I applications, an application will show. They're requesting a water test now that would show nitrate levels. On their property, is that something that we would want? To put out there to the public?
Well, the question is, is that foilable? And I'm, off the top of my head, I'm really not certain. That's something we'd have to look into, it's something we haven't had to consider before.
I mean, some of that information, I I would think, as you're indicating, would probably be proprietary.
You get it, it depends where where you got it, how it was obtained, there there's all sorts of of variables involved. Which is part of the problem is that. A a water test, for example, in maybe this may have to be posted in one situation, but not in another. Depending upon whether it was ordered by the town or by the individual, there's all sorts of.
Okay, I think as Jim said, we're gonna learn as we go, but we're gonna start out doing, you know, as much as we can. Learn how to refine it and make it a nice, smooth process for everyone.
And my word to the public would be that work with us, so if you see that something is not happening, make us aware of that. Rather than write an article into the paper, I would prefer, we we're all in this together, we want to do the right thing. We want to make this information available to everybody, so we're not looking to sharpshoot anybody, we're we're all in this together, and. The more we can disseminate information to the public, the better.
And and just to to finish up on this discussion, I guess one of the biggest raps on me, and I'll be the first to admit it, is I'm not. Very timely with my agendas, sometimes I wait till the last minute, because things are always turning up, so what I'd like to do. Starting today is, you know, taking notes from what we discussed today, give you some tentative items for next week's agenda. On Friday, put together an agenda, which I've been trying to do the last few weeks, and then, you know, it'll be subject to revision. But that way we can have documents ready, you know, in the twenty-four hour span. So with that said, next week, we're gonna, we're gonna have the code revisions ready, we're gonna have the Article sixteen ready. We're gonna look at the Davies Wetlands application, which we heard Friday, last Friday, we will discuss that with the. With the. Engineer and the planning board, and. That's what that, we had, we heard the hearing on that one, and Amber and I will also give a report on the, on meeting with the county about the W Q I money. And again, I'll, that's what we'll start with, anything else anybody has, you know, please get to me like by end of day Thursday.
You know, since there was some little bit of problems about the seventy-five foot and the hundred foot setbacks, you know, with the C A C and with the applications. I have that all drawn out and all all highlighted, so I I will, when we do the Davies thing. I'll be able to hand that out, we can put it up on the screen and and educate everybody.
They will make sure the C A C's coming in.
Yeah, and the only thing, the only thing, and I I'm gonna ask members of the C A C if they can actually join in Zoom wise. Is giving them. What are we looking for in terms of supporting them, in other words, there are two issues here, the seventy-five foot. We want nothing, nothing built in that seventy-five foot, that sacrifice, that's that's just something that's. We're just not gonna touch. And and what is expected in that 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 remaining twenty-five foot buffer, you know, that that's something that we have to really take a look at. Because they're asking us, and I think the request is there, that they're wanting to tighten things up a little bit, when possible. So in other words, you know, in that application that we had, we talked about putting a pool in facing the water. And there's not a lot of room there, and how close do you put it to the house to keep it out of the setback? And, you know, with that, but I remember houses that were taken down to the foundation, that, no, well, if you had the land, could you. Remember that house on Ram Island Road, there, where we. that, no, well, if you had the land, could you remember that house on uh Ram Island Road there where we, why don't you just push the house back?
Right.
And rearrange the pool so that you would be totally out of the hundred foot. You know, you had the room to do it. So the CAC really is looking to the town board to say how far, you know, otherwise they're, they're gonna, they're gonna continue to make good logical recommendations like they do with food covers and low flow this and that, the other things. Um, and and what kinds of grasses to plant and and buffers to put in vegetation. But I think we need to give them a little bit more structure on how we see the sec- the seventy-five foot area and how we look at the twenty-five. Just something to think about maybe now and next Tuesday.
One thing about the seventy-five foot area, Jim, is that that's beyond our, our purview to some extent. It's a DEC regulated area. And without, the, the, unless there's a bulkhead, the DEC generally won't permit any construction in that area.
It's really just a seventy-five to a hundred foot uh that we're talking about.
Or bulk, or bulk headed properties. Because the D C will generally issue a letter of non-jurisdiction over bulk headed properties.
Oh, I remember the property that was down near the wetlands where we put in the the kayak rack. You know, I mean, we're gonna sit there at a, a meeting for a half hour talking about a kayak rack. You know what? Good for this, probably, but not good for any property. You know, it's in seven, it's in that seventy-five foot area, you can't put in the kayak rack there, period. So I think just clearing up those guidelines a little bit more for those committees. Shorten the meetings, number one, make the discussions a little bit more meaningful because, and we'll send a message back to our committees that we're here to, if they are looking to move in a particular direction in terms of trying to tighten up and protect wetlands. We as a town board to a certain extent need to, to, to endorse that effort to, to the best of our ability. Still taking in consideration that every application is different, that there might be an exception here and there. But I think we could give them a little bit more teeth and direction and guidance when it comes to this. So that's just my, what I throw out for next week. All right. And I'll go through all that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll go around the table. I'll start. This Thursday night, we have a, a meeting of the Community Housing Committee. Uh, we're gonna introduce all the new members to each other and we're gonna discuss the uh governor's uh housing uh legislation. It's gonna be a discussion basically about what are we gonna do? We, we have a housing, Community Housing Board, but we have to make a uh an actual advisory board, and they have certain, you know, guidelines that we have to do. So do we make it? Do we incorporate the Community Housing Board that we have into this advisory board? Do we have two separate boards? You know, how are we gonna do that? And also we have to talk about, they have guidelines for an actual housing plan that uh the town has to put in place. So it's just gonna be kind of a brainstorming session, I think, to see where we are. That's Thursday on June, it should be on the calendar.
Assume you said, Jerry?
Yeah, Zoom, yeah. That's all I have, you know?
I don't remember anything, Jerry.
Amber?
Um, I don't have anything other.
Oh, baby.
There you go.
Here we go. I didn't bring it.
All right. Lions Club, uh, and and Amber and Albert commented on it before the start, and so did, so did Jerry. What a great a function you had at Gartners Bay Country Club on Saturday night, uh, your annual scallop dinner. Uh, brought it back after a year without it with COVID. Huge success. Great organization, do a great job. And I thought Gartners Bay did a nice job there too. On Sunday, I was, was invited to a tribute to Tom McReel, Captain Tom, as they call him, T Mac. A celebration of his life. And uh there were some inspirational words from Tommy G and from Lance Williamson, who are two dear friends of uh, of Tom's. Uh, Tom passed away about eighteen months ago, uh, suddenly. Uh, the family was there. Uh, he has his, his cousins, his four cousins, sisters were there, were there. Uh, Bridge Hunt spoke, Father Peter spoke, and so did Kelly, his wife, uh, for many years. And uh they shared that Robert Frost poem, which is my favorite poem of all, The Road Not Taken. And uh Tom was a lover of music, an avid reader, historian, lover of trains, a conversationalist. Had a great wit, was a kind man, and he was by far the first man that I met when I came on this island in two thousand and six as the house was being built. And he was, I looked forward to it. I actually, when I got off the express, I was driving out here in my brand new two thousand and six Toyota truck with the stuff all packed on the back of the truck. There was Tom at the North Ferry. And my first three rides over, I got out of the car and was able to talk to Tom. And from that moment forward, uh, we became close friends. We're only less than a year apart in age. Uh, I really miss him. I think great man and a wonderful tribute to him. They sprinkled his ashes uh off the ferry out between Greenport and and Shelter Island Sound. Um, I will next week also maybe put this on the ADA Guide for Small Towns. Uh, the U S Department of Justice Civil Rights Division, Dis- Disabilities Rights Section. Uh, I have their number. I'm gonna get some of their materials sent to me if I have it for next week or otherwise I'll push it to the following week. Uh, we're talking about existing building programs accessibility. And we're talking about Justice Hall and Police Headquarters. And uh, these are two buildings that date back ninety years plus. So we're, we're interested in getting those, uh, you know, fixed up and ADA compliant. I would like to remind everybody the Fit Center dedication is a week from Saturday for Garth Brooks. Uh, that's November sixth. Griffin, excuse me. When I say Brooks, my God. Uh, Garth Griffin at, on November sixth um, at the uh Community Center right across the street. So it uh, it it'll be a very, very, very nice affair. The school and the town are coming together to put that program together. Uh, three P M. And it should be over by four P M. And then the uh Commander uh Dave Clark is opening up the Legion down below for drinks, you know, for cash bar. And I just, we finalized Veterans Day. So Veterans Day will be on Thursday, November the eleventh. Uh, right across in front of the Community Center. Um, so that's all taken shape. And uh, that's, that's pretty much uh it. The other thing is, and I'll report on it next week after I put my notes together a little bit. We continue to meet. And when I say we, Dr. Dolger, Jim Reed, Jennifer Ryle, like Mary Carnavogal, uh Danielle Spears, who's the school psychologist, John McGeehan, who's a uh, a resident and a founder of the dorm. Lucille Bur- Burgess, who's the town social worker, and myself as representing the town board. We've been meeting, it's called the Community Behavior, Mental Health Education and Services Meeting. We've met twice. We have another meeting coming up in about three weeks. Um, we're, we're set, our focus is on improving the quality of mental health care on Eastern Long Island and, and particularly here on Shelter Island. So that's our focus, you know, the school and the town working together along with our uh local physicians. And tapping into um, and a really good resource guy is uh this new, new guy, John McGeehan, uh, who has identified eight to ten psychologists, psychiatrists, people that moved out from the city that permanently now live here on the East End and are staying, you know, they're not going back to the city. So there are lots of good resource people available for us. Uh, we're thinking about, um, you know, when we send people for referrals on how we can cut down on, you know, how we can follow through on referrals. Some of this treatment is expensive. Not all uh people accept the, you know, the health benefits and insurance. We're trying to think how we can fund those things, especially for, for young people and for, and for the elderly as well. So it's, it's a pretty good program. So I'll keep you abreast on that. But we're making some progress as we move along. Uh, thank you very, very much.
The, the last one I'd want to announce is the, is Friday, three P M. Uh, West Neck Water has a, their monthly meeting and Suffolk County Water Authority is gonna be making, giving a report and update, a three month uh you know, review of uh what's going on and where they stand.
So that's on the twenty-ninth, yeah?
Yeah, Friday at three o'clock.
At three P M.
That'll be in person or Zoom.
And Zoom, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go Zoom on that.
Yeah.
Will we get an invite for that?
Oh, yeah, well, it'll be on the calendar.
Yes, I was gonna say it's on the town website.
What'd you say, Jerry, three P M?
Three P M Friday, yeah. Okay. Dottie, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, Bob, you have anything? Okay, any, uh, Ambrose or Julia, any questions?
Good, thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. Julia?
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the audience have anything?
I would like one other minute executive session.
Okay, uh, if there's no questions, uh, thank you all for coming. We'll make, I make a motion, we go up to executive session for
Uh, this is for personnel.
Personnel matter.
Committee matter.
All those are favor? Okay, thanks, everybody.